Five dollars is income for the city. But fifty-five dollars is a liability. We are holding it on record, in, on deposit, until the certificate is redeemed. But we owe that money to the veterinarian when the certificate is redeemed.
The only problem I have with that is money for the city should go through the city treasurer or the city clerk, not the mayor. And I'm certain the mayor don't want to have to sign checks along with you. He's got other things he needs to do in the city. I don't know if Jackie's agreed to it or not, but it seems to me like it should be set up with, with the city clerk and her employees. And again, with the help of the auditor to work that out. If the council wants to do that.
So...
The fostering contract, I'm not aware of that. I just haven't had a chance to study. Have we been fostering out the animals?
Yes, sir.
Under a contract already?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's on Russell's monthly report. Every month, we have reported them when they're adopted, and when they're fostered, and when they're in and out.
And how that works?
That's one of the columns.
Is it working okay?
It's working very well because of the fosters who are set up. Because they're of excellent rapport. They are Dr. Sullivan, they are Morehouse Humane Society, who has helped us immensely with our program. They are Patricia McDaniel, who personally pays to have everyone that she adopt, fosters, she pays out of her pocket to have it spayed or neutered because she doesn't want puppies anymore than we did. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
And it's an ongoing thing. And we want to be sure that we're handling this threat for the safety of the people involved and the animals involved. And I would say, in the interest of time, if we could agree or disagree on whether you want or would authorize me to be a part of this and to administer it is number one in my mind. And then the details of how that's worked out are inflexible. Who is, I think, someone from the city, whoever is authorized, and I should both be joint signatures on the checking account. Whether it's the mayor, city clerk, or him ever.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, yeah, I, you know, I don't think the mayor has time to worry about, not that he's not worried about, don't get me wrong, it's something that should be handled with staff.
Well, Mr. Singer, if you could let the mayor tell me that to my house, then I will take no for an answer.
I don't, Jackie, I mean, you were suggesting to the council, I'm suggesting to the council, it ought to be something handled with, with the treasurer and the city clerk. Do y'all agree to that? I mean, unless the mayor wants to volunteer to do it, I'm just saying.
I agree, I agree that he needs two signatures.
Right.
No question.
And, and the auditor ought to be involved, just to be sure of their problems. We don't want the same problem we had on the last audit for us.
One of the challenges that I've had is tracking down someone to get the paperwork through all of the proper channels in a timely manner. So that would be my one request, is if I am personally responsible for this, which I am the person who has recruited different veterinarians to honor our certificates and become part of our program. And we have had an amazing response. And I won't go into detail, but we have had veterinarians offer to do other things for the city because of this program. And as a part of that, it's so important that they be paid in a timely manner. Not thirty days, and certainly not sixty days, within a week at the most. We need timely payment to the veterinarians because they'll only continue to honor our certificates for so long if they don't get their money.
Right, I think one problem, excuse me, one problem with the delay in the payment before is that, and we discussed this briefly, they weren't actually making the invoices to the city of Wentzboro, they were doing it to the person who adopted. And we could not just pay something that was not addressed to the city of Wentzboro because it just looked like we were paying someone else's bill. But we discussed that, so it's, it's really, can be fixed very easily if they just need to address it to the city of Wentzboro. The bills can be paid properly.
That's how it works.
I think that was the holdup in the past.
And then there were some personnel changes, significant changes in the office, too. But the veterinarian who's sitting out there waiting for payment doesn't realize, there was no communication with him about why they didn't pay. So that's all I had. Do you have any questions?
Before you, before you, before you, you said, the council needs to be aware of the fact that a resolution needs to be, in this case, authorized by the mayor to enter into a contract, first of all. Did we have that?
To request, to request, and the officer authorized the mayor to enter into this contract.
But there's no resolution. There's no paperwork, there's nothing there. Therefore, it's premature. The fact is that even as simple as a contract, the delegation of authorities can take, can take place after the contract has been intervened through. In this particular case, if we're going to act on this and act on it tonight, there should have been a resolution on paper.
And I've also been informed, I took the liberty to call one of our local banks to see what would be involved in if we were to get, and I told her, this is all up for vote, I don't know whether I'll be allowed to do this or not. But the bank would need a resolution from the council authorizing the opening of the account, the opening of the account in so-and-so name, and who is authorized to use the account. So there are actually two resolutions needed. And I may, if I may, suggest a subsequent meeting this week, is that something that could be handled in a meeting the latter part of this week? I strongly suggest that we don't wait thirty days to decide who is responsible for this and how it will be administered.
Is that something that mayor probably can look at with special calls, we can get this resolution drawn up? And get the, uh, top of the business.
We can do that. And I'd just like to add that Ms. Kimball had really taken the Humane Society of Wentzboro to another level. To, to, to a level that, that we just had no idea that would ever exist. You know, we've got people coming forward as New York City to Wentzboro to, to collect dogs that, 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 that they're dealing with.
This month, they came from Dallas.
Her understanding of, 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 of the animal has led us to a new level. Because even the care that we provide for animals right now, she, with, with her input, it's, the sanitation, the, the, the little things like walking dogs and things like that, you know, I just, I want to personally thank you for the effort that, that, and she, and she's, she's up in excess for damage, and she spent money, 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 you know, caring for a city project to make this. Because our love for animals, who can't help themselves, is, is so great. I really appreciate you, Ms. Kimball.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know that one of the projects that I have in the making is building an additional building there. And we have organized an annual fundraiser, the golf tournament, and in the first one, we raised twenty-five hundred dollars and have gotten subsequent donations toward that facility upgrade. So that is a foreseeable project in the very near future. And my first initial goal was to build a little isolation slab, a concrete slab with a pen, a doghouse, some kind of cover over it. Well, now we have the opportunity on the table to build a very nice building. Anything else?
Okay, I'll, I'll call special meetings, and we'll just go from there. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'll ring, if I can please, sir.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'd like the council to ask that I could amend the, the order by adding the termination of two officers first that wasn't added to the agenda. If the line of break of hiring.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda, to add to the agenda the termination of the chief of police, two officers, for proceeding to his, to six, of hiring of the new police officers.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. The ayes unanimously have been counted.
Okay, thank you, council. At this time, I'd like to report to the board to the termination of two former Wentzboro City Police Officers, Chester Coleman and Josh Martin, for their, uh, legal, hunting fear, and not illegal.
Moved to accept the recommendation of the chief.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Poses you have the right, that the record reflects that it was unanimously approved.
Thank you. At this time, I could recommend three officers for the Wentzboro City Police Department. The first officer, Mitch Davis. The second would be Jason Wright. The third would be David Thurston, to replace the two that we have terminated, plus one slide that we have faithful.
Make a motion that we accept the police chief recommendation for the three police officers to be hired.
It's been properly moved.
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. Is it all achieved?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item number eight. May I, may I?
Skip number seven. Number seven.
You've already...
No, you, you skipped out on number seven.
The seven?
Yes.
I intend.
Okay. I'll make this really brief. We have the only two items on my, other items on my project report are the two street projects, industrial park streets. The clear lane certificate should be forthcoming shortly in that project, where it's final acceptance, or final completion. And the 2011 street improvement project, they are presently in a forty-five day clean free period. And those are the only two projects on my agenda. Does council have any questions about those or anything else? Okay.
Hey, just, Joe, we requested y'all to show us a little bit of a map or give us a list of where, where we at and what we like.
On the streets, did, did I email? I thought I'd emailed that.
I didn't either.
Okay. If you would, check with me after the meeting, and I'll get you, I'll check, make sure I got your right email address.
Okay, thank you.
And any other council members that would like a copy of that, let me know after the meeting, and I'll get that to y'all.
Thank you.
And one more thing, by the way, the mayor has a large copy of that map in his office. If y'all, any, y'all or any of y'all's constituents might have any questions about, the mayor does have a copy of that in his office for viewing and...
You mean, officer?
May I offer the report? Number of dogs, adopted, three. Claim, one. Fostered, three. Transport, motor, one. Carling, a pen, eighteen. Two hundred fifty pounds of dog food. Yet date, twenty-six. Sit down.
What is your pleasure?
I move that we accept the Humane Society's monthly report.
It's been properly moved that we accept the Humane Officer Report. Second. And second. All in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. Park Chief, monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. Monthly, we had two private dwellings in town, one mobile home, one rescue car, one helicopter assist, four fire alarms, one truck was called. We told eleven colleges in the city of Wentzboro. Outside the city, we had one private dwelling, two rescue cars, five fire alarms, six mutual aid cars, one firework stand by for July fifteenth, July twenty-sixth, unit eight. That's it.
What is your pleasure?
Make a motion that we accept the Park Chief, monthly report.
Second. It's been properly moved and second that we accept the Chief, monthly report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Stay.
Let the record reflect, oh, yes, and lots of things. Item number eleven. Police Chief, monthly report.
Monthly report for Police Department, reason seventeen, January twenty-two thousand thirteen. For the previous month, we had twenty-nine criminal charges arrested. The high bed was nine, guilty charges on traffic side. We had forty-nine traffic situations issued. The high bed was fourteen speeding. We worked fifteen, we worked fifteen accidents on major highways, bought about fourteen parking lots, total twenty-nine. For this, for the first month and year, we took five hundred eighty calls. The crystal problem went gray, we got a major problem for the first year, but this time it's been with the well and the city of Wentzboro.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Just looking at your traffic charges, just clarification, you had fourteen speeding and then you had seven speeding in school zones. Are those seven included in the fourteen, or is that twenty-one total?
Twenty-one total.
Okay.
What it is, we've been working traffic there at the high school, there have been laws to slow down, the, as well as tracks that the buses can turn into the school. And when we write tickets there, there's a school zone, so we just, that's a different way.
Right, okay. I just, clarification.
What is your pleasure?
May I make a motion that we accept the Police Chief, monthly report.
It's been properly moved that we accept the Chief, monthly report.
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Both. Stand.
Oh, yes, and lots of things. Item number twelve, Economic Development Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chief Counsel. The, the, this past couple of weeks with the CWF application, we did receive support letters, and I think all of you did receive a copy by email by one of the senator and representative supporting for the fifty thousand dollar application to support that project. It is a project that is going to be mandatory and, from, from the state, and I'm sure that if it does not get done, handled properly, then we're gonna, we're gonna be seeing EPA very shortly. So you need to take that into consideration. The LGAAP grant that was submitted for fifty thousand dollars for the piece of equipment has been submitted to the, to the state. I have talked with the people from the state. The first funding was issued the first of January. The funding for our supplemental should be in February or no later than the first of March for the fifty thousand dollars. We are, we are getting very, very close to the completion of the airport lobby renovation. At this present time, we have spent a total of eleven thousand and thirty-five dollars. We have the application for the reimbursement to the state aviation department for ten thousand prepared, and it will be sent in tomorrow by certified mail to, to get that. And let me go back, the, the CWF application that, or resolution that you passed tonight, and the application is on hand, and the mayor will sign both of those, the, the resolution and the application, and it will be submitted tomorrow by certified mail as well to get that. We did receive, of the industrial park certification, we spent nine thou, I mean, we actually spent nineteen thousand, three hundred and something dollars from Mayor Meyer, which we were supposed to receive fifty percent reimbursement from Northeast Louisiana Economic Alliance and Louisiana Department of Economic Development. Northeast Louisiana Economic Alliance has submitted their portion of tier one, tier one supplemental, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is eight hundred, a little, a little more than, that's about nine hundred and ten dollars more than what was, was asked for. They had to do it, but they had extra funds, so they gave it to us. We are still waiting on the reimbursement of the funds from the state. There was, there was a total of ten thousand dollars approved, five thousand from Northeast Louisiana Economic Alliance, and five thousand from the state. And the state, hopefully, they will not take the five thousand, eight hundred and, and deplete our five thousand, and that's what we're looking for, the five thousand dollars to, to get that done. As I was saying, the airport is, is very near completion. We should be completing, totally completion of that little project within, and, within two weeks. If you have not had an opportunity to go, go over and look at the, get the progress that's been made, I encourage you to do so because it was very impressive for the work that these inmates have done to improve this facility. We did, we did ask, we did go up to our ten thousand dollars, and we stayed within the budget on the ten thousand dollars that we requested for the interior renovation. We still have to buy the furniture that goes into it. And, and I went to the airport committee and asked them, was it, would they allow me twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars to do the facade renovation out there? And the airport committee had no problem with that, and that's the reason that we are up to eleven thousand. And we should have the total project cost, excluding the furniture, under twelve thousand dollars. I would entertain any questions that anyone has on, on any of those issues. I would like to say also that we will be calling a meeting on a business in the industrial park next week. There's various, various information that needs to be discussed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy.
I'll have a question.
Question.
Mr. Cobb, is, is that a, the business that you're going to talk to, is that a cooperative endeavor with the, with our Economic Development Foundation as well? Are, are they involved in...
With, with the, now, with the industrial park?
Yes.
The, the industrial park certification strictly came through the city?
Yes.
And Northeast Louisiana Economic Alliance.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think, I have a little trouble hearing. I thought you said that you're, you're going to be in conversation with a, with the perspective of business coming to the industrial park, so...
No.
I misunderstood.
A business, an existing business, industry in the, in the...
Okay. Moved to accept the report as given. It's been properly moved that we accept the report as given. Of second?
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand. Let the record reflect. Community Center, monthly report.
Ms. Wallace could not be here. Handed out these, the written report that she sent. There were three events in the community, but any questions that she would have to body of, she could not be here tonight, so. Three events, if you can please, sir.
May I make a motion that we accept the Community Center, monthly report?
It's been properly moved that we accept the Community, monthly report.
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand. Let the record reflect. Monthly financial statement.
Income shows four hundred ninety-eight thousand, thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. In addition, it shows grant income. Where does this grant income, where does it derive from?
The grant income was initially misposted. It arrived, I believe, in October. It was misposted and put into the sales tax fund and to account for street industrial. It was not where it should have been.
Is it, is it where it should be now?
Yes, sir. And they're from the state of Louisiana is where the grants stem. You checked.
Paid, okay, then paid one state, if it is for a street, then wouldn't it go into the street department, under the street department?
That...
Therefore, giving us the, therefore, the balance that we're showing, there's a net income of two hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred, three dollars and thirty-nine cents. If it goes into the street department, that balance is incorrect. Then that makes the budget.
I thought...
Or makes this off.
My understanding was that it was to go into, the mayor could, correct me if I'm wrong, general funds into a capital outlet for, for street.
Then wouldn't that go into the street department? That's what I'm asking. And I'm not directing at you, anybody can answer for me. Doesn't matter.
What's the street department?
Well, the question is, we have two hundred sixty-one thousand...
The question is, we have two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-four cents that's showing in general funds. Now, is that, is that where it's supposed to be? Because it is identified on page, on the next page.
What monthly are the bills?
I'm in the D seven.
D seven percent.
I, I understand what you're saying. It's identified as grant for, for street. For street.
Therefore, wouldn't it be under street improvement or under the street department?
Street improvement.
I'm asking, where, where would it be? Wouldn't it be, well, let's take the street department, toll street department. Where would you put it then, if that's the case, if it was for street?
I think he wanted, he, his intention was, he said capital outlet, outlet for street. That's what.
Then if you do that, if you show it, and you're using it as income, then it inflates the income, net income to two hundred seventy-two thousand, four, one hundred, three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Is that correct? If it is not, then that amount should be ten thousand, eight hundred, twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. I'm only asking for an explanation.
And I believe Mr. Dunlos is right because that is classic, my thoughts classify that as income, well, that was already income that we received through the sales tax, so it's not, it's not new income.
It's not new income, that's correct.
Right, and that's what, that's what it's showing under this column, that it, that is new income.
It's not new income, it's, it's not new income, and it shows under that column because once we make that transfer, it goes into general funds first, and it shows in the computer as an income. If you'll look over on the, the page that shows you the thirteen month revenue and expenditures, the thirteen month slash there, you'll see that we listed it as, the actual revenue is eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. Transfers from general fund for, for our operating expenses as you previously approved in the L S D was a hundred fifty thousand. Then in the total revenue, that grant money is sitting in there. So we said, we did that because we wanted you to be able to see the difference between that it was not just revenue. But we, but it reflects like that because when we move that money in the computer, it moves, it shows like that. But it is not new revenue. It is not.
It may not be, but it shows a false reflection of the amount that we're talking about as net incomes. Therefore, you know, it throws us off.
Yeah, and it's going, it's going to throw us off about two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars for the rest of the year.
Ultimately, where would it go? We, we can move that out of there, I think it just has to be decided where it's, where it's going, you know?
Yeah.
Correct place for it.
Nothing, not just to merely make a suggestion, you don't have to, but I mean, this is the third street project we've done, and Roxton's involved, the first two, it might be, you know, a good idea to reach out and see if you can kind of correct that, but that's just, that's just my thought, y'all can do whatever you want to.
There are several other items that we need to take, pay close attention to, but we still, we have a couple of additional items that are not necessary to weigh.
Yes, just, just for the record, I, I'd like to say that. Amanda has, has really, and considering, has, has, has did a good job. But if you, if you, if you saw the, the record before she, she received it, we, we, we just had to go through literally every, every account and, and find out what was supposed to, and, and each accounting. It's, and, you know, we're not, we're, we're not trying to lessen our responsibility, you know, we'll make, make these necessary corrections, but we, but the record was terribly confusing when she took over.
May I, maybe somebody, we can speak with the special call meeting, get this adjusted, have it adjusted, let the county replay.
We'd be glad.
If that be the case, then would it be move us to, if we have some suggestions or some areas that we can maybe relay to, then to Julia to kind of look at part of that meeting, get it right? Such as, there's no fine revenue listed on here.
Okay, I haven't.
I know it's around here, but, you know, this is not a moving forward, and also, community center revenue is not listed on there.
The, the fine revenue is not on there, I checked into that today. City court sent November and December's fine money at the beginning of January, so it'll be reflected in the January P and L. So we actually did not receive any in December. They generated it, but we, we didn't get it until, same thing with, with the sales tax last month, I wanted to point that out. Normally, we receive the, the check from the school board on the thirtieth, approximately the thirtieth of the month, and deposit it immediately. But because it was December and the holidays, they did not deliver the check until around the sixth or the eighth, and we deposited it. So in January's report, you will see two deposits considerable, you know, for, for the sales tax. But yes, please, anything else that need, needs to be questioned or corrected.
Mr. Dunlos, do you want to let us know one or two or a couple you found, or you can wrap on those for you too?
I just suggest that you review the whole thing, do you? That way, you know, it, it factors each person, okay?
Okay.
I'd move that we table this until the special call meeting. Yes, that's proper action.
Is that a motion?
If that's, if that's a proper motion.
It's, it's a motion.
If he is out sick, tonight I'll take a bet.
He is out sick.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Opposed? Let the record reflect that it was unanimously obtained. Okay, what is Dr. Dunlos saying?
I will just have a couple things. If we're going to have a special call meeting, I would like to see us discuss and bring some action to city court during that meeting, along with Ms. Kimbrough's, the resolutions that, that we have talked about are, are further discussion as well as the violence. That's all.
Craig, do you have anything?
I'm done.
Ready?
Several items that I'd like to bring to the council's attention. One, of course, that we're receiving the agenda too late to make any type of investigation or do any type of research on the information that is being placed on the agenda. According to the Larson's Act, according to procedure, when I refer to procedure, I'm referring to ordinances, then it should be several days, it should be given to us in several days ahead of, of the meet. And I think that needs to be appeared to. Secondly, there are items that are also, that have not been, that, that was added to this particular agenda, not within the proper timeframe. We need to take a look at that. Thirdly, we need to pay attention to those items that was missed previously from the special call meetings that need to be, need to have been brought forward, and they were not added to this agenda, and they should have been. You know, we, we, we're wasting a lot of time, and we're getting nowhere. And I think, I think in some cases, and this is a personal opinion, I think some of it is being done intentionally, because there, there's no reason for us to be dragging some of this stuff as much as six and seven, eight months.
Well, Mr. Dunlos, I can assure you that any error is not an intentional error. We are human, and human do errors. Mr. Horn? Take the moment. Move to adjourn.